I'm sorry.
We'll call this meeting a close. And we will start with the roll call, please. Yeah, sorry, I'm on the agenda and I'm not following it, so. It's been awhile. So we will adjourn to open session and we'll start with the Budge of Allegiance, please. Please stand up for the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'll report out around closed session. Item four point one, conference with labor negotiator. No action was taken. And item four point two, personnel, public employee employment discipline dismissal and release. No action was taken. Item five is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be approved with one motion, which is not debatable and requires a unanimous vote for passage. If any member of the board to pretend or the public so requests, items may be removed from this section and placed in the regular order of business, following the approval of the consent agenda. Would the board members like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Superintendent Public? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion from the board.
You have to approve consent agenda.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Ms. Williams, yes. Ms. Dolan, yes. Ms. Strange, yes. Ms. Wyatt, yes. Ms. Daniel, yes. Ms. Feist?
Yes.
Ms. Ebert?
Yes. Now move to communications from the public. This portion of the meeting is set aside for the purpose of allowing an opportunity, good term, following the agenda, yes, for individuals to address the board regarding matters not on the agenda. The board is not allowed to take action on any item which is not on the agenda, except as authorized by government code section five four nine five four point two. Request forms for this purpose are located at the entrance to the meeting room. Request forms are to be submitted to the board clerk prior to the start of the meeting and speakers are limited to three minutes each and the board will limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. And I think these items are in the session section. So we'll start with Krista Steinmetz as our first speaker and then on deck will be Maureen Hickman.
Okay, so I'm Krista Steinmetz and I'm the mother of three dyslexic kids and two of whom are within the WPUSD and I homeschool our third. And I hope you could take time to read my findings better than yours. Over the last three weeks, I gave copies to better understand what dyslexia is and what it is not. So on a personal note, I live with the consequences of having great teachers for my kids who do not know what dyslexia is. One of my kids is a Gate student, has a very high IQ, but got tired of teachers calling him lazy and saying that he wasn't putting in effort. And it's discouraging for kids to be teased by their teachers who are not educated on dyslexia in front of their peers. And that often is what leads to kids becoming a class clown or cacking out in class. So my kid was a Cub Scout and all the way through Boy Scouts. He played baseball and football and soccer and drum lessons, youth group, lacrosse, and excelled in school until sixth grade. And by eighth grade, his self-dyslexia that was tested for outside of the school system could no longer compensate for the lack of instruction provided that he needed to process. He is graduating from high school, thankfully, and he's on track to for a trade. But there are plenty of years in between now and then. I'm not just being a dramatic mom, this has been trials and trials and a series of trials. But I will tell you that Chuck Wyatthead is on board. He would like his, he and his staff to be trained and educated on dyslexia to better teach his students because I can guarantee you that Phoenix High School has higher than the average twenty percent of dyslexic students. And did you know that point five percent of the world population has Asperger's? And one percent of the world population has autism? And we have structured and have implemented things in schools to assist those kids. But twenty percent of the world population is dyslexic and we are not able to diagnose them within schools nor support them without a fight, without SSTs for over a year to give the students the support they need. Thirty-five percent of dyslexics drop out of high school. Fifty percent of kids in drug and alcohol rehab are dyslexic. Sixty to seventy percent of kids in juvenile hall are dyslexic. And fifty to seventy percent of incarcerated people are dyslexic, have reading issues. Please let me continue.
A few seconds, but.
Okay. I'm gonna skip to this, that thirty-five percent of dyslexics are entrepreneurs like Bill Gates and Shark Tank judges. Forty percent of self-made millionaires are dyslexics. And fifty percent of NASA scientists are dyslexic, actual rocket scientists. We're missing the boat in giving these kids the opportunity to be successful by not giving them the instruction and the support that they need and early diagnosis. We have a huge opportunity to utilize these gifts and abilities rather than suppressing them and selling them outside of classroom because they're disruptive.
Thank you. Next is Maureen Hickman and on deck is Dwayne Christa.
Good evening. I happen to be the mother of one daughter who is dyslexic. She's severely dyslexic. One, as Krista just said, one in five, twenty percent of the population is dyslexic. And in WPUSD as in all the other districts, they're not receiving the support and the services they need and it breaks my heart. And this school district does not have a diagnostic tool and to me that's inexcusable and very sad. I would love to see WPUSD take the lead. The next Albert Einstein or Steve Jobs could be attending the school district, but the world will never know because they are not provided an evidence-based, multisensory, direct, explicit, structured, and sequential approach to instructing pupils who have dyslexia. Again, I said this at the last meeting, I implore you to set up a collaborative working group so that we can do the best, the best that we can, as soon as we can. Let's get the best dyslexic curriculum, let's get the best diagnostic tool. These kids deserve it, they need it. My daughter just took testing, she's in fourth grade, she just did testing at the beginning of the school year to see what level she was at. Sadly, fourth grade, she's in fourth grade, ten years old, I already held her back one year, and she was testing at the kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, and first grade levels academically. That's just horrific, this district failed her, that's why she's no longer in the district. But I don't want to see any other child or student go through this. I have so many people coming to me that say that they think their kids are dyslexic, but the district's telling them it's ADHD. That's the story I went through. Your daughter has ADHD. She doesn't have a learning disability. Well, she does, she's got severe dyslexia. And we need to help all the children out there that have this. Twenty percent have it. And like my friend Krista just said, autism, we're doing so much for autism and that is awesome, but we also need to do the same for those with dyslexia. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Colleen Christa and on deck is Mr. Scott Lehman.
Hi. So I have concerns that my six-year-old daughter may have dyslexia, she's unfrustrated, it's not even unmentoring. My other daughter has dyslexia and it is genetic. After her first trimester conference this year, we decided to request an educational evaluation because of our concerns. We were asked to come in for an SST. We were told at the meeting that our daughter is doing well in school and she wouldn't qualify for an IEP, so there is no reason to do an assessment. I was then told that the district has, that the school has no way to test or assess for dyslexia. I asked about any sort of screening to be completed. They said they have no screening tools for dyslexia. They said an educational assessment would not tell us if she had a learning disability such as dyslexia. I mentioned that Mr. Pickett told me they were hoping to start screening all first graders this year. They said that was the plan, but they do not have the funds. I was told if I want to have my daughter tested for dyslexia, I must have this done outside of school and at my own expense, at my own expense outside of school. As stated in the California Department of Education Dyslexia Guidelines, and this is a quote, "Early diagnosis is especially critical for narrowing the achievement gap, which is present as early as first grade," which is where my daughter is. "This is accomplished by screening followed by identification and remediation with evidence-based approaches. Early diagnosis is also critical for ensuring that students with dyslexia receive focused evidence-based intervention, leading to self-awareness, self-empowerment, and the provision of necessary accommodations for success in school and life." That's on page four. And then, "School psychologists are knowledgeable about screening tools, assessment methods, and effective class-wide and individual interventions. They can also assist schools in selecting evidence-based interventions for specific reading difficulties." That's from Verda Haven and Burns in 2017. "School psychologists are essential members of the diagnostic assessment process for identifying students with dyslexia and reading disorders." That's on page forty. Dyslexia is the most common learning disability representing at least eighty percent of all learning disabilities. There are approximately seventy-two hundred students in Western Placer. Statistically speaking, approximately fourteen hundred students in Western Placer could have dyslexia. Are we saying that Western Placer has no way to identify these fourteen hundred students? Fourteen hundred in the district could statistically have dyslexia. The most interesting part and scariest part of the SST was when the teacher was describing my daughter's strengths and concerns and she said her concern for my daughter was her self-confidence. She states that she relies heavily on the aide or other adults in the class. We were shocked, my husband and I were shocked. She is our youngest child, my other children are seven and eight years older, she plays with mostly older children, she is extremely self-confident, she participates in, you know, activities, she is smart, she is so self-confident. We were shocked that in school, she is insecure. And to us, that is yet another red flag. My daughter that I mentioned earlier, she is now in seventh grade and I went through this since she was in kindergarten, we have been going through this, we have been telling the school she has dyslexia, she has dysgraphia, she has dyscalculia, and we have heard the same thing. We left the meeting, my husband said we've heard this all before. She is now in a private school for children with dyslexia because she's too far gone. And I cannot do this fight again. She has to be diagnosed if she has this. I don't know if she does, but I need to know if she does because then I can help her.
Thank you. Mr. Scott Lehman.
To the board, it's Superintendent Callahan. I'm here tonight, I wanted to make sure that I come by and visit prior to your last board meeting, Damian and Chris, and I really, big props to the board for what, the role that they fulfill. So I wanted to thank you for your service from one that was in the trenches with you as we went through the years. Wanted to read just a few accomplishments that we attained. We continue our district culture, caring, and approachability. We passed the first two school bonds in over twenty years. We build and modernize our schools, we did technology innovations together. We ensured financial stability by clean audits and positive budgets. We expanded the school farm by five hundred acres. We garnered eighteen million dollars in the middle of recession to keep the lights on. We hired our first marketing position, we had our first facility master plan, we worked closely with the state of Lincoln for a new joint use to keep recreation going, supported a four-million-dollar grant by Barrett Hess. We had close relationships with associations where we do not go to impasse. Signing, we signed a contract for our first school resource officer, here you have two now, it's great. We expanded career education offers and also had a state technical education award. And most of all, in two thousand, we also opened the first high school in a hundred and fourteen years in Lincoln, little small step. And then won the state exemplary district award in two thousand and eighteen. It was really a great accomplishment and I was honored to be with you along the way. I really want to thank you for the trust you gave in me all of those years as we took on many, many things. At first, financial and then as it went on, societal, that came squarely. And many times, board members aren't thanked, I really do want to thank you because your job is not one where you are there to gain notoriety or to become famous, but to serve the students of our district. So I really want to thank you, I really want to thank you for the many years of service and I also want to thank you for being on the hot seat. I wish the greatest of luck to the people that are joining the board. We have, we are honored by having great boards in Western Placer and that's what makes this district great. I love people that make a comment and say for the entire meeting, that will not be me tonight, I did fail. I did fail retirement, so I'm actually superintendent in another district, but I'm in the Peace Corps and out to California, as I call it lovingly, trying to help out that district and we have some things. So I wanted to come to your last meeting, I apologize I had something with the district, but I wanted to be here tonight just to thank you too for everything you've done.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, that was the last speaker and before we move on, I just wanted to go back to the consent agenda and I just wanted to make a comment, thank you Miss Prophet for your donations to the district, that is great, thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to item six point two, reports. And we will start with Lincoln High School student in high three, Arianna Dolan.
Hi, everyone. I haven't been at a meeting in like a month because of the Lincoln High School, Lincoln High School on Twelve Bridges production of Julia Caesar, which was very successful. The Lincoln High School choir is performing Stories of Christmas on December eighth and ninth. Our Zebra baseball team is having a fundraiser this Thursday at Leatherbees from five to eleven P.M. Last week, we attended the Conference of School Board Association Conference in San Diego and I learned a lot at the conference, including better ways for me to reach overall population at my school and just to connect with more students in a better way and good ways to deal with issues that students have at school. And I got to connect with a lot of other board reps across the state and it was really cool to hear about their experiences and the work that they've been doing, so it was really a good experience and that's my report.
Great, thank you. Twelve Bridges High School student advisory, Lara Williams.
Hi. So I also had the privilege of attending the CSBA conference in San Diego. It was really fun, but it was really cool to see how many student board representatives there were in California. Like I feel like we kind of get like closed-ended and it feels like a, kind of a specific job to us, but it's really cool to see like just how many schools have it. And it's really cool to see like how most districts have at least one representative going to me, nice. And then our school won the best student section in Northern California on the Cameron Salerno Instagram page, which was nice. And then we also have an upcoming rally, our school is spreading awareness for Fethol, which is connection, but other.
Back to a four-year.
Yeah. Avoid, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Thank you for the, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Alright, that's about it.
Okay, Phoenix High School student advisory, Shelby Crain.
So I don't really have a whole lot, so I went to, I also went to the CSBA conference in San Diego and I think it was really fun. I went to the one in L.A. with Chris Wyatt and this one was a lot better. There was a lot more students there and it was good to see some people that I met in L.A. as well. And I think that's like something I wanted to do for next year, next conference is try and speak at one of, on one of the panels. As a student, because when I was there, there wasn't a whole lot of students speaking and I just want more people to be able to like hear the voice of students as well. And it was a really great opportunity as well. And then another thing about the school is we have an alternative education volleyball tournament on Thursday in Auburn. I'm set up for that so I can let you guys know how that goes. That's it.
Thank you, I'm so glad that you all had an opportunity to go to that training. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to do so, but if you catch online Rockland Unified, if you ever watch their board meetings, their students do a pretty good job too at being real active in the meetings, so just sort of put that out there. And next, board member reports and comments, we'll start with Ms. Wyatt, member Wyatt.
I am so excited that you guys got to go. I don't think we've ever had a school board rep go to CSBA conference. I know Maddy was kind of bit involved, she was on some committee or something, but I think just you experiencing that and knowing the good, bad, and maybe the other, of what other districts are going through. But I hear you loud and clear about the fact that students still are not being heard, that there, you need to have that voice and I think we're working toward that. I just want to report out that, for those of you that do not know, we have Santa mailbox in downtown at Bearman's Plaza and it is there until the seventeenth, so littles can go in, even big people can go in, write their letters to Santa, they will be, get a letter written back to them from a Santa helper, not Santa because he's very busy, you know. And last year, we've done, the most we've ever done was five hundred letters, last year we did about three hundred, so hopefully with Pray being canceled and all that, we didn't lose out, we're not gonna lose out on too many. And also, the Interact Club at Twelve Bridges High School is going to be making, making, putting together Santa stockings for our soldiers over wherever they may be, wherever they send them, so we've got lots of supplies to fill up forty stockings. That's it.
Thank you, member Crain.
Okay, well, last week, I attended the Carlin Coppin Book Fair and I gotta tell you, Ms. Williams, the librarian, that was amazing. She took me around, showed me all the books, different grade levels, and I really brought me back to when my kids were attending the book fair at Coppin. So it was really nice to see and she's just amazing, you can definitely tell the love that she has for the books and her kids. And I mentioned to her a couple of kids and she knew exactly what time and what day they were going to be in her room. So it was, it was amazing and Julie's doing an awesome job there. She definitely leads by example, so I just wanted to let you know on that one. Attended the CSBA conference this last week and it was my first conference and I gotta tell you how amazing it was, there was five thousand, maybe six thousand of our closest friends there. And.
Really?
And I gotta tell you, the opening speaker was absolutely amazing and I connected with him in so many ways. The couple of things that he focused on was love and compassion before all else. And I think as a district, we really need to focus on that. Also, be the one, be the one to make a difference in a child's life. The important classes that I took there was mostly well-being and mental health for our kids. One of the ones I really enjoyed was students can approve of student engagement and achievement and how we do that as a board in turn, you know, going down to the staff. And then also prioritizing, I can't even speak. Thank you. Well-being and joy, connectedness, connectiveness in our education. The other one that I really enjoyed and I really think that we can make a positive impact here is, was a community engagement and advocacy. Oh my god. Advocat- I'm having the light. Yeah, anyways.
I think I'd say they're all doing that.
So it talked about parent ambassadors, the roles and in the, and that they play connecting with family, schools, and staff and community. And I think they have volunteers and they are up to thirty-eight in this one class that I took in this district, was thirty-eight, they have one for every single school. And they met with the staff at the district office and they were able to give information and go out to the parents and the community if they had any questions about what was going on in the district. So I thought that was really neat. That's all I thought. Oh, one other thing, sorry. Tree lighting Thursday, get to see all the little kids, five o'clock downtown, you get to see the craft fair, but most importantly, you get to see all the little kids.
And go to Leatherbees.
Oh, and go to Leatherbees after for the baseball.
Yes.
Right? Okay, that's.
Thank you. Member Price.
So we all went to this conference, obviously, it's really good. First, I want to say a huge thank you to Maria because she really did make that entire thing happen and then she got to spend a lot of time with our student board reps to make sure everybody got where they were supposed to go and ate and all that stuff. So I've been on a lot of these types of things and I've not seen them organized quite as well as what I saw, so I very much appreciate all the effort. While there, I was incredibly impressed with the three of you, watching you interact with other students and members of other districts, spending time with you and asking questions, it's so selfless what you do. All of you are more focused on how do I engage more of my peers? You're very aware that you represent them and thereby want to represent as many of them as possible. That's very refreshing. I got to see Arianna and Julia Caesar and she crushed it. That is a lot of dialogue and she still owes me the one thing that she said in the play that she will continue to use in her own vernacular, so I haven't forgotten about that, I'm still waiting to hear that. There's gotta be some quip that you're gonna take from that and I want to hear. I want to also, so Brendan Fleming was the speaker who really kind of highlights that, much to what we've heard tonight in public comment, that within all of these students are responsibilities to find pathways, each of them, so that they can have an opportunity to be successful. And all of us have to be very, very good at looking for the ones that aren't saying anything because those are typically the ones that either don't know how to ask for what they need or have other issues they're working through. And I left those two or three days thinking like, wow, there's just so much to do. And I would imagine that we are probably missing lots of opportunities to find the right thing for the right person and he said, well, actually it was one of the sessions, so there's a couple of things that you should, every, you should know every student can say yes to and the first was, is there one adult on campus that they feel safe with? And is there one adult, doesn't have to be the same one, that has high expectations of them? And I thought, man, that is such a really important question. I spent quite a bit of time asking you three, like, how do we ask that question to every single student at every single campus, every single week? So that we know the answers and we can fix them when we find them? And maybe that's something that we have to get your help with, even asking that question to your own peers, so that we can find a way to do that. So I am going to challenge this administration and this board to figure out a way that we always know those kids that can say yes to all three of those. I don't remember the third, by the way, I don't think it was his critical. He said all three were critical, I should have. I got excited, the first two were so great, I was like, well, those are the ones, and then I was like, what did he say the last part? But I think those are absolutely, and very doable because we have wonderful staff here, I think it's just, we can only fix what we can measure and we can only measure what we can find, so we've got to find that. I want to say too, I was in a couple of sessions that were really structured around governance and how to run a board, how to run a board meeting. And a lot of things that they were talking about, governance calendar, governance handbook, having opportunities as board members to interact with their student board members in conferences, and all of those things, I can say, we're doing that, we're doing that, we're doing that, we're doing that. And it's because these are all things that you have made happen in a short period of time with a sense of urgency and I am very well impressed because I'm watching districts much larger than us sort out how to do it. And I was like, oh, I don't know how we're sorting it out, I'm just doing it. So, and I don't know if you all know this, but she ran the California International Marathon and her time was three hours, forty-eight minutes, she qualified for Boston, so while we were all doing our conference thing, she was forty-eight hours away from a marathon, so I just am very impressed with you. I appreciate the trigger and that's all.
Okay, I'll start out by saying friends, Romans.
There you go.
Limp your ears, actually, that's about, that's about all I remember from high school. Of that speech.
Okay.
Just the one.
Glad you heard.
No, I didn't have the opportunity to go to the training because of course Chris and I will be leaving the board, so we chose not to spend the resources for that. Did the other, the electees get to go?
Yes, George was able to go and unfortunately Marjorie, last minute, had unforeseen circumstances, was not able to attend, but what happened.
So did we also see that, we, I mean you, see that there is an on-demand option available? So she can.
Yeah, I think, I think Maureen's got.
She's driving now.
Okay. So I'll just report that last Monday, whenever the. So I'll just report that last Monday, whatever, the twenty-eighth, I think it was, I attended the County Committee on School District Organization, and we approved the minutes from last year. So that was the extent of our business, so. We'll be getting next year to do the same, if there's no business in the meantime that's required. So we do that every year. And I'll still be on for one more year, because you don't have to be a school board member to be on that committee. So, and further if I choose, but probably not. So I think that's the end of my remarks. And now we will turn it over to Western Pacer Teachers Association, Josh Reeves-Snyder.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to report. We did start the nomination process today for Educator of the Year. So we nominated one from K six and then one from, from, from K eight, maybe it's K eight, and then one from high school. So looking forward to hearing some good stuff about what our teachers are doing, get somebody nominated to the process, and then go on from here to the county, whether they can be in other educators from other districts. So, okay, that's it.
Thank you. Now we have Western Pacer Classified Employee Association, Gus Navarez is president. So we will move on to Superintendent Carrie Callahan.
I will say, since Josh shared about the Educator of the Year, they have done a good job the last couple of years. I mean, they've always done a good job, but the last two years, we had County Teachers of the Year. So two years ago, Danielle Thompson was our secondary teacher of the year at classroom for, for the entire county. And this year, Tiffany McGuire at Carlin Coppin was Elementary Teacher of the Year at the county level. So good job through that process, obviously. We sent some good folks to compete. So Christie failed to mention that she started her Thanksgiving break in a tutu and a turtleneck. Yeah, so on the, the, the Ag Department had the turkey trot where you could dance or walk or run around the farm. I don't believe the flyer said in costume, but Christie did show, and it was fabulous.
I connected for some kids.
Didn't say you couldn't.
Yep, and so it was fantastic. And April was there as well. April is actually president for the work this evening, so that's why she's not here. So I started the Thanksgiving break at the farm in the morning with, with them. That was a joy. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving break. It's hard to believe that their break is now right around the corner. I had shared with the, the board and candidates, so it's for our two new members, is delivering the Years of Service pins to the school sites. The, we have changed our pin company, because the pin company that was here sold to somebody or coordinated, and it was in Florida, and we were having issues. And so anyways, we had to change pin companies. The pins are gonna be in now, it looks like, on time, but we had decided to reschedule just based on calendar. So we're gonna do it right after the return from winter break. So I will send new dates and times for folks to consider joining me and handing out the Years of Service pins at our school sites for those employees that have earned them. I participated in the third session of Leadership Lincoln, and it was Civics Day. And so all of the service organizations came and presented. So I heard from Quanis and Rotary and the American Legion and one other one, can't remember right now. And, and then also got to go to the Foundry. And I'm actually meeting with Nathan Oates from the Foundry tomorrow to talk about ways in which we might, as a school district, be able to better support the work that the Foundry does, because they serve our kids. And so it just makes sense. Attended CSBA with everybody. And then transition of the board, the last meeting, we congratulated George. Marjorie's, it was still too close to call, but it's, it's not officially certified, I don't believe yet. They have until the ninth to do so, but it's, it's done. It's done. So congratulations to both of you, and we look forward to you and it will happen on the twentieth, so you'll do your oath and literally then sit down.
Right to work.
Like, get right to work. So we will, Cabinet and myself and Emma and Maria are meeting with, with George and Marjorie next Tuesday. We're gonna have lunch and just kind of start that onboarding process. It is definitely a bittersweet, and, and I would say that, as Scott said, we've always had a good board in, in Western Pacer, and I believe that that's gonna continue to be the case. I'm super excited for Marjorie and George to be joining the three remaining amazing board members. But it is a bittersweet, because working, I mean, it's nine years in the district, and Chris and Amy have been here every step of my journey and before that too. And so it's gonna be really hard to say goodbye to you. But I'm, I'm excited for, for the next step, so. And that is my, oh, the one other piece is just with the governance calendar. We did update, and that's part of the future agenda aspects at the end of the meeting. But there is, I've talked with Ed Services and with our Special Ed Department, and we are gonna do the first meeting in February, a presentation on dyslexia, and then talk through kind of things that we're doing to address the, the issues. Because I would not disagree or argue with anything that has been said in terms of things that we need to do better. And as I've shared with, with them, and, and it's personal for me too. My son was diagnosed with ADHD, and it created the situation where he then wasn't diagnosed with dyslexia until later. He absolutely has ADHD, but he didn't get diagnosed until later. So it's, it, it matters. And for, you know, not just because it was my son, but it matters for all of our kids. And kind of going back to the CSBA, you know, we, it was somebody who was acting out, because there was stuff happening, and it wasn't dyslexia related, but, you know, and, and if it just, if we had people asking the right questions to try and support and get the help for our students. And so in early February, we'll have a presentation, and then we'll talk further about next steps and getting a collaborative group and some other things going, so. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the information discussion action agenda.
Can I force Scott Lee to say something? I just want to thank you for the time that, I mean, it's been a few years that we got to work together and side by side. So thank you for your kind words, and can't believe you're a superintendent and another superintendent.
I'm not a trader, it's a, it's a small district in Pacer County. Peace Corps in the hills, peace corps in the hills is what it's all about.
He's a custodian.
I know, I shoved a stone today, so it's okay, it's fine. Oh, thank you, Chris. It's great to be Project Cornerstone with you too, it's nice. Another program we brought up to the school, we're gonna do Project Cornerstone up there now.
Cool.
I appreciate it. All right, have a good rest of the meeting, thanks.
I was gonna say, Scott doesn't want to hear my presentation?
No.
Okay.
We're gonna do that.
He just ran, he didn't want to hear me talk.
It is, it's right here somewhere. Okay, so members of the public wishing to comment on any items should complete a yellow request for just the board trustees form located on the table at the entrance to the boardroom. Request forms are to be submitted to the board clerk before each item is discussed. The speakers are limited to three minutes each, and the board will limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. Okay. And, okay. Sorry, what's going on? Okay, item seven point two, approve arts, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant expenditure plan.
I'm very excited to come up to talk, so. I am presenting tonight a requirement from, a part of this grant requires that the board review the plan that present, were presented and approve the plan before we can spend the funds. So there's a lot of information on here. I'm, I'm gonna read from a lot of this information, because it is sort of technical, I want to make sure everybody understands. But hopefully you've had a chance to look at the plan in detail, it's, it's two pages. So on September twenty-seventh, Governor approved E one eighty-five, which revised art, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant, which is one of the proposals in the adopted budget. And so the district was funded little under four point five million dollars to be used on five purposes. Containing standards-aligned professional development instructional materials, professional instructional tools for improvement in climate, developing diverse culturally relevant multilingual school library book collections, operational costs, including retirement and healthcare cost increases, and COVID-nineteen-related costs necessary to keep peoples and staff safe for in-person instruction. The funds are available through twenty-five, twenty-six, so it's a multi-year program, and we have a multi-year plan attached. It, the districts are encouraged, but not required, to proportionally use their allocation for all five purposes. So that's important to understand, because the direction of the plan and the district is to have the funds go towards two areas and not all five of them, because we have other funds that we're using for those other areas. We have been funded a large amount of one-time funding over the last couple of years, specifically federal and state cares, A R P and COVID funds that you're probably familiar with over the last couple of years. Very little program funding or one-time or otherwise allows for expenditures on basic district operational costs. So a lot of our programs that you've seen I present are for specific purposes, on educational areas, and so not a lot towards operational costs. As the board of trustees has identified, school safety for staff and students as one of the district priorities, operational costs related to school safety will be a priority of this, these funds and are presented in the plan. The remaining funds are allocated, allocated to our operational costs beyond school safety will be spent to address a variety of one-time needs, upgrading replacement equipment, reinforcing infrastructure, software infrastructure, and related to custodial maintenance, food service, technology, and transportation. So all these, we're spreading this around a lot of various operational departments. And, but the main bulk of the funds are on school safety, specifically at school sites, okay? A B one eighty-five, again, as I mentioned, requires the board review and approve the expenditure plan. We are not allowed to encumber or commit any of those funds until tomorrow, the board approves it. So that's very important, that we can get started tomorrow on things that we've already planned. So there are some things that we're waiting to do. We are required to spend them on the plan, and we will be audited also on this. As another note, if people are curious, one of the areas is, because it's called art, music, and instructional materials, we are not spending these funds on those areas. We do, we were just passed Proposition twenty-eight, you're probably familiar with that. Everybody voted on it. It is providing K twelve public schools and annual allocation, allocation of art and music program funds. That says an ongoing program, these are one-time funds. So starting twenty-three, twenty-four years, so next year, we stand to receive about one million dollars, that's annually, and those funds are to go towards hiring staff for arts and music instruction, the majority, eighty percent of that, and the rest on art, music, other items. So I just want to make you aware that we do have funding for art and music, and we also have funding for instructional materials, because we also receive the learning, learning, it's another grant, I can't remember it.
Learning recovery.
Learning recovery grant, and we are allocating some funds for our language adoptions and for our instructional materials adoption. So there are some funds for that. So it looks a little bit different as far as the title, and we wanted to explain those, those nuances. You look at the plan, we have about little, less indirect, because this program doesn't allow the district to charge indirect on this. We have about a little over four million dollars that we're allocating towards these areas. Area one is the instructional focus, and that's about one point one million dollars. And then area four is operational costs, and that's the, that is about almost three million dollars that is specifically targeted towards safety improvement, enhancement at the school sites. And then we are not allocating anything for COVID-related costs, because we have other fundings we've been using on that. So any questions on, anything on the plan?
I do. I'm sorry, I can't.
Yep.
Just shuttin'. So these operational costs are specified to safety, are these as a result of threat assessments on campus?
Yes, so we have, we have ongoing threat assessments that, that Reno, our Director of Services has been working with, as our safety officer. We met with maintenance facilities, safety, Reno, and went through all of those areas where there are assessments. And then we looked at commonality among, like, if we're gonna do perimeter fencing, we're gonna have it at all schools, not at just one or two that have been, that, because we haven't had assessments on every single school. So we're making sure that we have, every school has an impact of, of safety, yes. So a lot of those things that they recommended, we layered on to all the other schools.
Did you get a lot of that worked out?
It's a five-year program. It won't solve everything, the safety, because just like doing re-keen schools can be pretty expensive. But there is a lot of high-impact things that we can do that people will, will have an impact on students and safety, and also that our, our community will see as far as perimeter fencing, ballards, radios, trainings, identifications of roof, roof identifications for, so we've been working with the SROs and the ED on those things. So I'm trying to think off the top of my head. It's a very detailed, but we tried to summarize it, because we can get really detailed.
And I'm assuming that Reno's team has been the ones to sort of identify the priorities of each of those things.
Yes, yes, and we've had maintenance facilities there to try and cost things out.
And we can't do any of the work until you guys put this.
Right, so I have, I have codes waiting for me assigned. I keep telling them, we gotta wait.
Any other questions? Seeing none. We didn't have no speakers on this item. So I will entertain a motion from the board.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion, anyone? No?
The only thing I can say is, I, I don't like that this is where the money has to go. I mean, I wish that programs that directly benefited kids, not that these won't, but, you know, programs that really kind of drive college career readiness would be front of mind, but it, this is the reality that we find ourselves in. So it's with reluctance that I see money spent around protecting kids when I wish that wasn't a necessity. So a philosophical quote.
Well, I think that, that area one through three does kind of get some of those funds to those goals, so, yeah, but I think you're right, the lion's share, the recorded of it is.
I'm glad we're getting it done, it's just unfortunate that it has to be that one, is all.
Any other comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes, you know, I'm instantly, thank you. Item seven point three, consider approval of a devon to the contract with the superintendent. Mr. DeCros.
As you know, you all gave superintendent a positive evaluation at the last meeting. So as a result, we're recommending that the superintendent's contract be extended. It currently expires June of twenty-twenty-five, and as part of the language in the contract does some positive evaluation, we recommend the contract be extended an additional year through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. Are there any questions for, questions? So then I will entertain a motion first.
So who, that we extend Superintendent Kelly's contract for an extra year until twenty-twenty-six?
A second.
I'll just say that I wasn't at the meeting, not where we took this up to do the live evaluation, so I just wanted to maybe hand it to Mr. Price to give some background on evaluation. Of course, you know, we really appreciate everything that you've done over the past year and every year before that, of course. But, you know, you're, you're a rock star, you've been, you've done a great job for the kids in this community, so, Mr. Price.
So this was another thing that was done differently this time than had been in previous. Usually, we would just all submit in a silo our evaluation, and Maria would have to figure out how to shuffle those. and Maria would have to figure out how to shuffle those cards together and give the superintendent an evaluation. This time, we actually sat down as a group and each went through each of the items and discussed them. So the first is that we rated her higher than she did her self-assessment, which I actually wanted to score her lower at one point for not being as good at assessing herself as she did. But apparently that's not the thing. So it was a collaborative process. We were able to really kind of, you know, flesh out areas in which we wanted to make sure she felt our support and we wanted to challenge her a bit, although she does that herself quite a bit. So it was a unanimous approval and rounded appreciation from everyone on the board. There was talk about doing pluses and then plus-pluses, which at one point we had to just go, look, it's just a grade, you don't do a plus and then a plus-plus because it just seems like you're in a size. But all kidding aside, she's been here through a really rough season in this district's past and took a lot of heat personally for some of the frustrations that we all felt during COVID. And I think she did a great deal of grace. She held herself to a tremendously high standard. And as I said before, I think we're really, we're really lucky to have somebody who expects so much out of herself and out of her staff and out of her students. So it was, it was quite a love fest and we very much appreciate everything she did. So the evaluation itself is very, very good. We gave her a couple of things to chew on and I think that she's gonna do that and much, much more. So I think from all of us, we're very thrilled to have you.
Thankful.
And I, I wanna add to that, that I was so happy that we had this opportunity because never in my time of serving on the board have we evaluated together. And it made such a different impact, it made a huge impact, it was very positive. There's always room for growth for anybody. And I hope, I hope that I still grow after I am off of the board. But I just, it's about time that we have done it this way.
Yeah, she has high expectations of either, even us. So she's asking us to consistently work harder, do more, be more thoughtful. And, you know, I mean, I think that's inevitable, so.
Christine, could you have me thank her? You could pass this time.
Last, last.
Any statements? No? Okay.
You're great, Carrie.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. No real calls required, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 7.4, establish annual organizational meeting. Ms. Callahan?
All right, so this is done even if we're not in an election year. So every year, the board engages in a reorganization of the board and it's an opportunity to revisit the positions, the leadership roles within the board, so president, vice president, clerk, as well as make some decisions about board representation on committees and then whether or not the board has some direction about actual board sanctioning committees as well. So the, there is ed code and then we have board bylaws to support this that requires that the board establish when their reorg meeting is going to be and it has to be immediately prior to December 9th, which is when the window opens and it has to be done prior to the 24th. And so, and so this, this evening, we are looking for the board to take action to establish our annual organization meeting for December 20th, which is when we will also do the oath of office for our new board members and seat them immediately following some initial pieces. So you'll start the meeting and then Marjorie and George will end the meeting.
But you're gonna stay for the whole time, maybe?
Yep. They don't have to stay for the whole.
She's like, what?
So the, we are looking for the board to take action to establish December 20th as our annual organization meeting.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Just the process, okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 7.5, adoption of revised new exam policy regulations. Superintendent Callahan?
All right, so this is just standard process and it's an adoption of a new board policy in AR related to challenging courses for, by examination. So we started looking into it and most districts have this and we, and it is a CSBA standard policy in AR, but our board has not adopted that in the past. And for the purposes of being able to support students who feel like they already know it and challenge courses for, towards graduation, we felt that it was something that we wanted to take on as a district. So looking for the board's approval, it's bound through the standard process that we follow for policies in ARs.
We've never had some.
I know, that's surprising too.
No. Yes. Well, and what I, what I will say is that we absolutely had some students that have done some challenging of courses and we've honored that in the past. But then we started talking a little more detail about certain things because there were, a question came up about like, well, we've never really done it for anything other than math. And it's like, no, like it really is something. And so then I looked, I'm like, well, let's, let's pull over board policy in AR. And I was like, we, we don't actually have it. And so Maria found the CSBA one and then we made some tweaks and chatted with counselors and admin about how to, how do we make it our own? And so there's some minor tweaks just to make it conducive to what we're looking to do in our district, so. I, I feel like it's a great opportunity because if kids can challenge courses and then in lieu, because there's still the requirement, if you challenge a course, you're still required to attend compulsory education until a certain age and you have to attend so many minutes. But this, I see, is a great opportunity for us to be able to allow students to take other coursework or perhaps maybe go to see her at college in the morning or in the afternoons or work and do work experience because they've already challenged courses that they know and they're not forced to then sit in them for seat time to get a grade because they're able to then open up their schedule to do other things that might be more meaningful, so.
Yeah, because maybe they've done their research and they've done some of the free online educational resources on the internet?
Yep.
Khan Academy or something?
Absolutely, Khan Academy or, I mean, there's just, there's students who are self-motivated in certain areas and they're very, very knowledgeable, so why not give them credit? If they can challenge the course and actually assess out of it and then go do something else.
Allows them, so.
So, yes, so we're excited about this.
Take a motion from the board?
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, a discussion? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Future agenda items, we have the governance calendar. Are there anything, anyone who'd like to see of the agenda? Moving on. Upcoming meetings, the next meeting, as we've said, our organizational meeting will be December 20th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. And next is adjournment, meeting is adjourned.
Should start it out for the leadership folks that are in here taking notes. I feel like you guys got off really easy.
I, I may have, I may have tipped him off that this meeting was gonna be one of the shorter ones, yeah.
I mean, insider trading.